I'd like to call this meeting the Princeton City Council's order, Clerk Call Rule.
Mayor Mayberry.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
And pledge.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead now to the public comment period. Public comment period is available for the public to speak to the council at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes if possible, and I'll have to state your name. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council tonight in public comment? You can do it now, or you can do it later, or you can do it both times. Okay, Kent, go ahead.
I'm going to read my statement again. I see on tonight's agenda the address of political sign permits. It noticeably doesn't address political sign fees. Once again, I ask our city council to not misconstrue our ordinance. When the permit is applied for, fees are due as stated in the ordinance, but it is a misapplication of the ordinance to discard the intention of the fee schedule. Mr. Slezky, Mr. Slezky honorably paid his fees. Mr. Volker was notified of his fees as written in the fee schedule, and waiving of his fees is not intended with the appropriate reading of the intent of the ordinance. Mr. Volker, even now on this late date, still owes his fees at $20 per sign. It will be unfair and an abuse to the taxpayers if our council inappropriately weighs his fees, and you will lose credibility if you favor Mr. Volker. Again, I ask you rightfully serve all taxpayers by doing the appropriate, honorable, and intentional act of instructing the city to bill Todd Volker for as many 16 square feet signs at $20 per sign as informed by the city, required in the fee schedule, and not exempt in the city ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Okay, anybody else with public comments? Very good. Now we'll go to minutes from the regular meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on August 18th, 2025.
Motion second on those minutes. Is there any questions or comments from the council concerning those minutes? Seeing that, Clerk Call Rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Slezky.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye. Thank you. Now onto invoices with City Clerk Janet Henning.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have $71,962.6. The Department of Streets and Public Improvement, $169,117.47. The Department of Public Safety, $188,180.96. And the Department of Public Property and Utilities, $269,644.40, with a grand total of $598,904.89. Mayor, our councilmembers present and have confirmed the reviews of all the invoices in our announced minutes.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Motion second. Any questions or comments concerning those invoices from the council? Seeing that, Clerk Call Rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Slezky.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have Resolution R-25-026, requesting temporary closure of Hill 9 Route 26 from Peru Street to Central Avenue on Saturday, October 4th, 2025, for a Halloween parade.
I move that we approve Resolution R-25-026.
Motion has been given. Second, is there any question or comments from the council concerning the resolutions? Pretty straightforward. Clerk Call Rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Slezky.
Aye.
And Mayor Mayberry.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. I saw people out decorating the front yard today for Halloween already. Forgot about a few other holidays in between. We're going to go down to the city manager report, please, Teresa.
In your packet is the July 2025 century report for the firefighters. And it's all I really have except for, obviously, everybody knows we were prepping the last couple of weeks and this week, a little bit of week we have left for Homestead. Thank you to the crews. I know police are, you guys are going to be taxed as well coming up this weekend, so I just appreciate all the hard work that goes into it because it is probably one of our biggest weekends for everybody at the city. So with that being said, a lot of our street projects are winding down. The Zering Park sidewalk project is wrapped up and looks phenomenal, and we're hearing a lot of really good feedback on that. So I'm just pleased with the work that the crews have done this year. It's just been really, really good. So it's been a hard, busy summer. So when Homestead's here, you think it's almost done, but we don't, not totally, but just kudos to everybody for all our hard work.
Anything else, Teresa?
No.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I believe the council members would all echo what's fun to watch how our community is, we have older infrastructure, but we're rebuilding, and there's some really good additions that, again, I give kudos to City Hall for working on that five-foot-wide sidewalk that goes down South Huglitt, then it turns and goes into Zering Park. A nice addition to Princeton. We love our pedestrian walk. Jerry, you walk and your wife walks and enjoy it.
Yep.
Good exercise. Okay, on the mayor's report, a couple of things. You know, in our district here, we have a state senator and a state representative. So our state representative is Ryan Spain, and our state senator is Lee Alejandro from Dixon. These senators and representatives, they do know we're here, and they do listen to us. They have contact on a regular basis with our city manager, Teresa. They have contact with me as mayor, and certainly you council members as well. They're open to phone calls. And a good example is this is State Representative Ryan Spain. He put on an open house to discuss the Red Cover Bridge, and that was held Thursday, August 28th, so it was held last week. And it was a nice, nice, nice group of people. There was neighbors that live out by the Red Cover Bridge. It was leaders in the community. And he had IDOT there. We're very fortunate that, I know that Teresa's where we have IDOT located in Dixon. We have IDOT in Ottawa. We fall under the Ottawa jurisdiction on a regular basis. But they had a change in the leadership up there. The gentleman that was the main lead person at IDOT in Dixon, he retired, and Trish Thompson took over. She was promoted that position, and I bring that up because Trish lives outside of Princeton, just about three miles outside of Princeton. So we have good eyes on every day. She's leaving town, and she travels Route 26. She travels, actually, she covers Ottawa as well as the Dixon offices. She was present at that meeting, as well as three other staff members from IDOT out of the Ottawa office. And so basically, a good meeting, and then she explained where they're at, and like all challenging government projects that especially are of historic value and unique to this, like the Red Cover Bridge, it takes time to go through the hoops. But the good news is, the bridge is definitely going to be put back in condition that it'll be having passenger vehicles going across it. They're trying to come up with ways to minimize this happening again, and so that takes a little bit of time to figure out how do you get a semi, if it wanders off and heads towards the Red Cover Bridge, how do you keep it from going through the bridge? If you put turnarounds, there's one on the south side that a semi can turn around and it has to, but there's none on the north side, and so there's talk about what to do there. They also have some new high-tech warning devices. She said that are electronic, so it reads the height of a vehicle, and it triggers a sensor that flashing lights go on and to alert a person that they're over the size, but doesn't necessarily alert them that they're over the weight of it. But anyway, so the challenge is, when will the project be done? It's a million-dollar project. The money's been earmarked for it by the state, and she said that it's probably going to be 2027. Get that all where it needs to be. She mentioned 2028, and that's when the audience started to groan. But I think we don't, we don't, never shoot the messenger. So we appreciate Trish Thompson, what she's trying to do for us. We appreciate Ryan Spain putting this on. He did a great job moderating it, and everybody was friendly. And so that's what the latest is. The good news is that it will be put back into service for vehicle traffic, so that's good news. But there is some additional damage they found in the process, so that's worried about that. So we appreciate our state representatives, state senators working on it right now. With that said, you know, we look forward to this weekend with Homestead. I like to think that our community looks good all year round, and then we give it that little extra polish, just like with something through your house for supper, you go make sure that the step is swept off and the evac from the carpet as well. We've got things looking good, and again, Teresa mentioned the different departments that have worked hard to do this, and we do appreciate the work of the departments, as well as they got a busy week ahead. All the maneuvering of barricades and bleachers and stages and all those different things. When we go home at nine o'clock at night, they come back out with the street sweepers. They come up with garbage trucks, and so it looks like everything's back in place by the next morning. So a lot of effort that goes on to make that happen, so we appreciate that. We're going to go on now to old business, and I know in old business, we're going to discuss the political sign permits. And so, Michael, why don't you give us a quick overview, if you would, where we're at with that whole process and discuss it as a council?
Sure. So the basic history of this, this during the election cycle, there were a couple of candidates brought to our attention by Mr. Parrish that had signs that were too large for the districts they were in. Don decided to get his permits for his signs, and we alerted Mr. Volker that he should also get permits for his signs as well. He did not follow through with that, and instead, we gave him an ordinance violation ticket, which he paid in the sum of $100 plus $25 in court fees. I think that's right. That could be a little off. But we felt that if he had gotten permits, he would not get fined. However, he got fined, so, and then by that time, the signs were gone. So we established that there were no need for permit fees at that point, given the violation was over. It had already been paid for. So we've had some complaints that this was not handled right, so we elevated it to council for a special.
What would the fees have been for his pro signs?
$20 per sign. I believe there were about six signs, so just right on about $120.
So let's get ourselves educated one more time. So we have, you know, obviously, you've got a code enforcement book that's probably about this thick. I know it's digitalized. Now we're down to this thick. But the point is, I, being in the real estate business for 40 years, I had no clue that we had a regulation in there that stated that a sign cannot be in a residential neighborhood. It cannot be over, how many square feet?
Six.
Six square feet. So.
You can't even get a permit for one that size. They have to be under six square feet. In non-residential districts, you can get a permit for something that exceeds that, up to 30 annually.
May I correct that? It's up to 16 feet. Square feet, is that what you meant?
It's up to 16 square feet.
Okay. In a, okay.
That's the maximum it can be. That's what Michael told me.
Okay. So a couple of things, and I certainly want the council members to weigh in this, but I'm just going to give my thoughts. So there's a lot going on here in so many ways. It's like right now on South Main Street, and Jerry walks by, and I walk by, there's a Trump sign out in the front yard of a house, and it's, I just went out and measured it. It's four feet by four feet. So it's saying in a residential neighborhood, and it says, "Trump, Make America Great or Make America Great Again." And again, I'm not sure to beat up our president. That isn't an issue, but the point is, that sign would not be in compliance right now. So in theory, we would be fining those people. So, and then we talk about, you know, that we have, our constitution allows us to have freedom of speech, and we talked about how political signs are very, very touchy, how we handle that. So I personally, and that sign that's on South Main Street, the people that own that yard are both retired attorneys, husband-wife attorneys. So I don't want to take on that battle. I think that's a waste of resources in our community. Here's what I meant. I want the council to weigh in. I think we need to just move on. I think Mr. Volker has paid the $120. You know, obviously, he could have been more diligent, and what Mr. Slezky did, what he saw was an error. I think that he could have, but, you know, at this point, I'd like to just move on with this and just haul the wash. We all got educated about the size of signs. I didn't know how big a sign could be in a residential neighborhood. Now I do know. And I think the other thing that came out of this is, if a person is coming in to get a packet to run for city council, whether it be for the mayor's position or the council member's position, there's going to be a little piece of paper in there telling the do's and don'ts, and telling people how big their signs can be in either a residential neighborhood or a non-residential neighborhood. So we're going to eliminate that issue because Mr. Slezky here, responsible person, he didn't know how that is signs for violation, and so we're all getting educated. So I'm going to ask each council member to weigh in on this, and then we're going to come to the consensus on this and move forward, and hopefully, that's where I feel. Let's just move on. I think that Mr. Volker paid $120, and I'm good with that number. Move on. So I'll start with Mike McCall.
I'm happy with where we're sitting right now. I mean, $125 with the court fees ends up, it's a wash. I think we're good. I think we just need to move on from it. I agree, but I do wonder going forward, Michael, as we get into the campaign season, when you drive by the coffee cup, there's probably eight huge signs there. I mean, who's, is anyone being charged for those? And so how do you track them down? That would take half your.
And, you know, those are on, you know, railroad property, and do we hold the railroad responsible? Do we hold the candidates responsible? You know, it can be tricky, and again, then you get into matters of free speed.
And that's just one example, Michael. There's other big signs on people's front lawns as well. And, you know, do we, if we had an enforcement officer that goes from house to house saying, "Take it down" or "Pay the fine," I mean, that's the alternative.
We use discretion often.
Well, in city, candidates that are running may be informed by county.
No, national, and national, signs for national elections, same thing. I mean, do our state senators and legislators, do they worry that if they wanted to put a sign up that they have their own? Probably not.
Obviously, no. They have no, so.
We, I have put a packet together, though. Tom actually requested that as he's running for sheriff, so packets put together, ready to go.
Am I permitted to comment?
If you would, let's get the rest of the council members. Jerry, you want to?
No, I, no, I think we're on the right track here.
Okay, let's go ahead. Dan, go on.
I think that the ordinance is blind in the fact that, it not only covers political, but the ordinance covers any sign, correct?
Yeah.
So it's not really limited to political.
Yeah.
So I don't know how you'd want police to event signs, and that sort of thing. I mean, that opens up. The signs have got to be content neutral. I don't think you can single out political signs.
No, you're right.
They cannot be singled out. Therefore, the ordinance has to cover all signs in general.
Banners as well?
That's the same.
I mean, the corner of Main and Peru, when things are going on, I mean, Hector, you've got your big VA sign promoting breakfast, and there's all kinds of other signs up there, and no one.
And I don't, I don't want to hurt those people, but if you go by the ordinance, that's what it is. They should be permitted also, too. As far as in the packet, I think it's a good idea, but that just covers stimulus elections, and you've got county elections that could fall in here. You've got state elections. You've got national elections. And I don't know. On the flip side, I think you start to infringe on people's freedom of speech when the election is not going on, such as the Trump sign that's out there. He's not a pro-election, so it's a form of freedom of speech, and I don't know. It should probably be permitted. I mean, it shouldn't have to be purchased and permitted for the sign. But yeah.
I guess the question is going to be limited to political signs.
I sincerely doubt it.
You have to cover across the board all signs.
Right.
So the reason that we have the ordinance is to discourage people from putting huge signs on top. That's, I would imagine that's the notion.
Right, right.
It doesn't seem to be the case. I mean, people think they can just put up whatever they want.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a lack of knowledge, and I think maybe if, if the ordinance on signage was maybe a little more prevalent somewhere in the website? Because I know I looked, and I didn't, I didn't really see too much of anything, except what you could or couldn't do. And I had gone by what had previously been done, which obviously I followed the step of someone that was out of compliance. But yeah, as far as the Volker, I can kind of see it both ways. He tried to skirt around paying the fees, and yet have the benefit of the signs up in residential as well as commercial. But he did collect his fees in the end.
In the form of what?
In the form of the sign.
So if we were to invoice him for those, for the permit fees, any thoughts on what his response might be? Has he already communicated to you kind of where he's at on this?
Um, I haven't interfaced with him in a couple of weeks now, but, you know, I'm not sure what his reaction would be. There's nothing to permit at this point.
Hector.
Well, there's something on that far as what she said to go back and within the ordinance to backfill whatever already has happened. Mr. Volker has paid his fees, which would have quite did the same thing he would have done in the first place. Freedom of speech, especially if it is a residential area where it's on a private property, it becomes a little bit tricky. Our signs that we put out there for like nonprofits that are trying to raise money to basically keep doors open, that also becomes an invasion. Obviously, they're bigger.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, so.
But I think this is a lesson learned. We need to, going forward, we need to either really try and do the best we can to enforce the permit fee for larger signs and just see how successful we might be.
Yeah.
But we're going to have people that are going to put them up, and they're going to just ignore us. We know that.
Yeah, because we, like for our veterans, we have three of them, Walmart, the old pump kick, which is Horizon, and then right over on Main and Peru. So I think also that there should be, if you are going to go ahead and address this aside from having the ordinances up in front with specific signs, I think before this happens is to kind of start putting kind of a campaign out there to let people aware. Not that people are going to read most of the time. And most of the ones that actually do the national or Senate, is usually their campaign managers, their offices, that you would have to address with it, not necessarily the candidate.
Sure.
Is it possible to contact news media, Shaw, and ask for some kind of an article about all this? That would be.
Oh, like a, like a PSA? Like a PSA?
Sure.
Well, I mean, something that's in their electronic VCR, their online version, I mean, just an article that maybe you would write, just to kind of talk about the issue and what people can expect going forward if they're going to be asked to get permits.
Just a simple press release.
Yeah.
We can do that every election cycle?
I don't, I don't want to hurt the veterans groups and some of the nonprofit groups that I think do a wonderful benefit to the area.
I think those benefit everybody, right? I mean, it's hard to have a nonprofit. That's where it gets so touchy because you don't want, they need that advertisement.
They need it.
I am not going after your veterans. That corner seems to get signage from that.
Absolutely.
Everybody. But, yeah, charitable organizations, absolutely. We should try and help them as much as we can.
Okay, I think we have a field what's going on with the council and some thoughts. I appreciate everybody's thoughts. Let's go ahead. Michael, have a seat if you don't mind. Kent, do you have a, do you want to address the council? Come up to the mic and just go ahead.
I think it's a great idea to give a waiver to veterans groups and maybe some of the groups. But to address Mr. Gomez, Mr. Volker didn't pay his fees. He paid a fine violation. Difference. And I think you're ignoring, perhaps on purpose, perhaps accidentally, that Mr. Volker was notified three times by Mr. Zering, twice in emails and once in a phone call, and maybe more. I don't know, but I know that through the Treatment of Information Act. And so in this case, in this case, it was abuse. And here's how you correct it. You do what Michael did with Mr. Slezky. He notified him, and he came in the next day and paid his fees honorably. And the ordinance is there for a purpose, and this council needs to enforce your ordinances, and if you want to change the ordinance, tweak it, that's a problem. That's a problem. I think Teresa would agree. It's a good thing, probably, we need to give it more definition. But we need to fulfill, we need to, we need to enforce and fulfill the purpose of the ordinance. And we need to treat all taxpayers fairly and not treat someone as a builder exempt. I don't know if you're doing that in this case or not. It seems to have an appearance of that, but I'm not going to say that you're doing that, that you're favoring someone necessarily. But this is something, I'm speaking as a taxpayer. Mr. Volker didn't pay $120 in fees. And it's just like when you owe for your utility bill, and I mentioned this in my long letter, that bill is still owed, and you're charged a fine for your next bill. That's the purpose, Mr. Gomez, of the fine, and the fees are similar to the amount of your bill.
I would tell you to also, the fines also consider fees that individuals pay. Those are also fees, even though they're a fine, but there's still fees that are collected. So I know what you mean, but he did pay something, and that's what everybody's trying to say.
But that wasn't for his fees, and we have a fee schedule, and so you are being antecedent to the fee schedule. Fee schedule says that he owes $20 per sign, and you're ignoring the fee schedule, and he was well informed. And paying a fee is different than paying a fine. And this is unfair to the taxpayers if you allow him to not pay his fees, which is appropriate.
Kent, any else?
Probably not.
Very good. Okay, so this is wrap voting on this sign. I'd like to just get the consensus. I'm going to say still, we're going to move on. We learned a lot. We've all been educated about the size of the signs. And Don, you bring up some great points there. Jerry brought some good points, and I think that as elections come near, we need to let both the Republican and Democratic parties know. You know, the Democrats got an office right here on Main Street, and Republicans, it's easy to get ahold of them. I know Mr. Dent Lissel is one of the strong Republicans. He's in this office in the state all three days a week. So we're going to go ahead, unless there's anybody objecting, we're going to go ahead with the consensus that we're, kind of host and viewpoint, and move on with the idea. We're going to learn from this and do a better job of educating the people, because nobody puts their signs out there knowingly, they didn't put the signs out originally knowing that they were violating anything. They didn't know any violations. And the gentleman down on South Main Street that's got the four-foot-by-four-foot Trump sign, he doesn't know it's a violation, right? In a way.
At some point, Volker did know it's a violation.
You bet, and I appreciate that. He was made aware of it. You bet. I agree 100%. Just like you were made aware of it. I understand, so I appreciate Kent's comments concerning that. But I, it's hard for me to get excited about enforcing something that I wasn't aware of as a council member, because I, again, I've been in real estate business a long time. I've put out a lot of signs, and I've been in violation. I've got signs right now that are not in that size range, so I'd like to move on. Are we good with the council? Good. Okay.
Are we going to somehow exempt?
Let's take a look at the ordinance and.
Yeah, we need to get an education on that, right, to change that?
Just a suggestion. I think what I wrote down is, and we can talk about this further, but maybe have a better definition of the types of signs, the ones that can be exempt, maybe. But then also a better definition of the process if there is a violation, if this is going to occur. That way, it's also, I think we can do that. But we can rewrap something as an amendment and then have council obviously review that. That way, we just need to clarify any of the gray areas that point forward.
Do we have a document, like if I walked in and said, "I want to put a big sign," someone's going to say, "Okay."
The permit.
Yeah, the permit. That's all in place.
Do we have a permit document, or is it just a basic permit fee? Is there always strictly four signs?
Yeah. Not just the square feet, but actual measurements, and what they actually are, because, I mean, a lot of individuals might look at, oh, square feet is this, and what volume.
And we know we only have to look over to twenty miles to LaSalle, Peru, to learn from what they're doing, and Michael's got good relationships with these neighboring communities to find out what Tennessee, LaSalle, Peru, Magoda, and then we can work with what they're doing as well, in a productive manner. Kent?
May I, I do have something more.
Sure, go ahead and get to the podium, please.
As I discussed with Teresa many weeks ago now, it will be, and I think that maybe this is in place, or it's going to be, it will be a good thing to, when they do apply for a permit, to give them a simple eight and a half by eleven piece of paper that says what the sign ordinance is, what is permitted, what isn't, and then it is right up front, which, which didn't happen this time around. I want to also mention that in my discovery, there is another ordinance that I think we're still confused on, and there is an ordinance, and Michael, please correct me if I'm wrong, there's an ordinance that says signs can only be at any, at any given location on any given lot, can only total thirty-two square feet. All of the signs together, they can only sum up thirty-two square feet. And I found that in our ordinance code. So, and on residential properties. And like I wrote in my letter, I assume that that's an aesthetic consideration, but even more, I assume it's a safety consideration, so that people don't have car accidents, who are trying to try to read so many signs at one location. And I think there was somewhere in here some confusion about, or maybe just unawareness of the fact that we have an ordinance that says we can only have thirty-two square feet of signs in any given lot. So when that exceeds thirty-two square feet, then the person who exceeds it, and in this case, there were three lots, like that on Main Street, that had approximately sixty square feet or a little bit less, and I took pictures of them, and I wrote that in my letter, and I retained those pictures, if you wanna see it. And so, once it reaches thirty-two square feet, that should be the all that, all that we have, unless we change the ordinance. But we need to enforce the ordinances that we have. So I wanted to just make mention of that, in case anybody was not educated to that.
Thanks, Kent, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm learning an awful lot, and that one's gonna be a tough one, we have to scrub that one, because how do you, how do you enforce that one, and people put their signs up, take them down, but let's, let's move on, council. I appreciate your input, everybody's input was very helpful, so thank you. With that, is there any additional old business from the council? Okay, is there any new business from the council? Any additional public comment from anybody in the audience?
For the final public comment?
If you'd like to.
Yes.
Okay.
At the last meeting, I illustrated what, what in my opinion is an abandoned property. Mayor Mager and I have talked about this pretty extensively, and it's next to my property, and I feel that it is a detriment to my property. I've talked to Teresa about it extensively. I'm gonna read the letter, from the letter that Mr. Zary wrote to the property owner, just a couple of upper sentences here. And it says, "State Development Statute five slash eleven dash thirty-one dash one requires you to repair your property to a safe condition in fifteen days. If the property is not repaired to a safe condition or demolished in that time, then the city may apply to the circuit court to cause the repair or demolition." So this was in the demand letter that was sent to the owner of the property at five twelve South Church. Laid in the letter in large font, bold, it says, "You have until July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five to correct the conditions on your property. Nothing has changed. It's worse than a month ago." So I wanted to ask the council if there's been any activity, any movement toward correction or toward assuming the property for demolition. I wanted to ask that question, maybe to the mayor.
Okay, very good. So typically during public comment, we don't necessarily go back and forth, I would like to address this, so if I could, the council members can get up to speed on this. So the neighbors that he's talking about, I did meet with her twice in person, and that was about three weeks ago, and we had a lengthy discussion, and she was working on getting a contractor to come in there and do some cleaning on her property. So she, you know, she's aware she's in violation, I mean, she's an elderly lady, and my point would be is, I would just say that she'd just gotten out of hospital, so we were trying to, you know, give her a little room there and that whole thing. And then the person that she had at her own residence doing some work, became, they were injured, and that was the person that was gonna be one of the possible people going over to clean her, her yard. Now, I was at the yard yesterday, and I walked through the yard again today, and, and I understand what Kent's talking about as far as being overgrown, I've been on the property. So I talked with her on the phone again, and encouraged her to continue to work on getting a contractor. If that doesn't work, what we're gonna do is, she offered, said, "Would you like to clean?" And I said, "Well, that's not my job as mayor," I said, "But let's try to find you somebody." And so, she's diligently out there working, I'll, I'll continue to have dialogue with her. I do have, through the vocational program at Princeton High School, I, there's two students that will be mentoring with me this semester, and they start September sixteenth, and they're looking for not only some good projects, but also some community service hours to fill the rest of their, for their senior graduation. And so I would just say this, Kent, if she doesn't have it cleaned, then I'll send them over there with my, I'll be mentoring them, and we'll, we'll start working on cleaning that. So why don't we do this, the next council meeting's the fifteenth, I won't have any, probably get an update from Letitia, of course, between now and then, but we'll, we'll keep in touch here, and then the goal is, we'll work on it if we have to, as volunteers.
I'd like to make mention that she's, tomorrow, she will be forty days past the deadline date. That's a long time, forty days.
I appreciate that.
And she probably received the letter July eleventh, which would be fifty-five days since she's had the letter. And that's getting to be a long time, and it's getting worse. It's impacting my property worse than, than even a month ago.
And I understand it. So again, we're not gonna dialogue back and forth anymore than we already have, so Kent, I appreciate any more of this comments that we make, or else we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we do have a plan of action, council members, on that, and I will be in contact with her, again, I was supposed to be in contact with her the past twenty-four hours. We do wanna see that get cleaned up. Any additional comments from the public? Okay, before we close that, Terry, hang on, I just wanna say, everybody, we really want you to enjoy Homestead this weekend. You know, there's a lot of good things going, every one of us works hard to try to make that come together as council members. We, we encourage businesses, we encourage residents, individuals. I know our new council member, Don Sludsky, he's been involved with the car show for a long period of time, that's on Sunday. Hector's got the best gig. Hector, aren't you part of the judges for the barbecue contest?
I'm not a judge, no. I'm just there to make sure that I have it to get inspected, we cook, we come bring it in.
Okay.
You'll be tasting everything, I'm sure.
Well, that all depends.
Why, they got some pretty good gigs.
I had tasted, I had some tasted, some after the event's over, because they do make a lot more than what they were supposed to bring in. So I was like, hey, let's come and taste that.
There you go.
Well, I had tasted some.
Don't forget the guy that waters the flowers, and, you know, keep your mind to it. Again, appreciate everybody, use your comments, Terry, if you would, please.
I move that we adjourn our regular council meeting this evening, reconvene for our next city council meeting on Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six o'clock at City Hall.
Second.
Motion second, we could, third, call the rule.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Sludsky?
Aye.
And Mayor Mager?
Aye. Thank you for attending, this meeting is closed, and feel free to stay and talk to your council members.[1796.41]